Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's 9:00. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September the 24th, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, we are very pleased and honored to have with us James Long, who is president of the Gideons International here in Granbury. I was just talking to him. In 2019, this blows my mind, the Gideons gave away 91 million Bibles in 2019, pre-COVID. And they do such a wonderful, wonderful job. It's unbelievable. But we are very pleased to see you again, Mr. Long. Welcome.
Please give our invitation. Please pray with me this morning. Our Father, we give you thanks for your love, your mercy, and your grace. We are grateful, Father, that we're Americans and enjoy the freedom to praise you and speak your name without fear of oppression in our great state of Texas. This morning, Lord, we pray for our leaders in our cities, counties, states, and our nation, granting wisdom, understanding, and courage to make the right decisions in all matters of governance. This morning, Lord, we pledge our local leaders. Lord, grant to all our elected leaders here in Hood County the clarity of issue, truth of purpose, and all petitions brought before the court, and make the decision in this court in the best interest of all residents. Father, we pray that you will lead and guide us, and thus be your servants here on earth. And when you're through with us in this life, take us home to be with you in heaven forever. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the pledge to the great state of Texas. Honor to Texas.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, united, one and indivisible.
Okay. We have two proclamations here today. One is the proclamation declaring October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Ms. Bondi?
What?
Are all of y'all with Bonnie Lewis here too? All of y'all?
All of us together.
Are we all together? Goodness. Let's all come down here, and y'all come up here, and we'll do a picture taking.
We're going to blend the pink in with y'all.
Look at this. Come on up here. Good. Good.
Y'all not get the memo for pink today?
No, I guess not.
Well, they have blue.
Don Liddy did. Don Liddy, you only come up here, you part of this group too, with that pink shirt?
Ashley, do you want to take them off?
Yeah. First. Okay.
Okay. Where's the proclamation? There it is, right there. Who's going to read this? You want to read it? Who's going to?
I'll read it.
All right. Good. Good.
The official proclamation to designate October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender, identity, or socioeconomic status; and whereas the Hood County Commissioners Court recognizes and participates in a public awareness campaign to support National Domestic Violence Awareness Month; and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims; and whereas, on average, nearly 20 million people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, which equates to more than 10 million people who experience domestic violence annually. One in four women and one in nine men experience severe intimate partner violence sometime in their lifetime. And whereas, on a typical day, more than 20,000 phone calls to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Mission Granbury received and responded to 950 hotline calls last year. The need for safe housing continues to be rated as Survivor's Most Urgent Need; and whereas, Mission Granbury provides a safe haven shelter for women and children who are victims of domestic violence. For victims who are not seeking shelter, Mission Granbury's non-residential program provides victims with safety planning, counseling, case management, and resources. In fiscal year 2024, Mission Granbury's Victim Service Program provided services to 181 women, nine men, and 132 children. And whereas, preventing domestic violence means changing the social norms that allow and condone violence and requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each wholeheartedly committing to transforming our community. Now, therefore, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence program, and victim service providers, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all residents to become involved and efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and recognize the impact it has on our community. Signed this day, the 24th of September, 2024.
Great. Good job. Good job. Yeah. Walton, keep this. Don't this for you.
Thank you.
And then we have another one.
We got a couple of things Judge Rebecca wants to share with you.
Yeah, I'm going to give this to you guys because this is for us to decorate the square this year.
Oh, okay.
We've got the new purple ribbon, and we're doing the corkboard purple ribbon.
Oh, great.
And that's for victims to write their feelings, or anybody who knows somebody that's been a domestic violence survivor, they can write their feelings and pin it to the corkboard on the square this year.
Oh, that's going to be a great idea. Where's the other proclamation? It's right there. Good. You want to read this other one here? Because this is...
Sure.
Oh, this is to designate October 1st, 2024, National Night Out in Hood County, Texas.
That's not us.
Is this Sheriff Deeds? This is not y'all? Hey, good to see y'all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
We have a little something for you to wear on your pin.
Oh, good.
So you can let people know you support.
That is good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll...
Thank you.
It's the one on...
Sheriff? This is yours. You understand yours. You under your glasses? I'll give you the reading for you without your glasses. Come here.
I'll read it.
Here. I'll let you read it.
All right.
Turn that around?
Yes.
You know, but mine probably should have done that a minute ago. We can still get in front of it.
This proclamation is to designate October 1st, 2024, National Night Out in Hood County, Texas. Whereas it is essential to have compassion and collaboration between our communities and law enforcement to promote a safe and secure society; and whereas National Night Out is a national community-building campaign that is a great opportunity for citizens and law enforcement to partner up against crime; and whereas National Night Out promotes law enforcement partnerships, enhances relationships between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community; and whereas Hood County Sheriff's Office and Hood County Constables play vital role in keeping the citizens of Hood County safe from crime; and whereas it is essential that all citizens of Hood County be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Hood County; and whereas law enforcement partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby call upon all citizens of Hood County to join us along with the Hood County Sheriff's Office and the Hood County Constables and the Governor of Texas in supporting the National Night Out on October 1st, 2024. Further, let it be resolved that Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, as National Night Out in Hood County. Signed this 24th day of September, 2024, by Judge Massengale and the Commissioners. So...
Sheriff? They'll have a photo. I'll take your seat. Yeah. How about this?
There are a couple of community events. Did we talk about this?
Yeah, we have two different deals planned. One in precinct four in Betwater, and the other one in precinct three in the...
They put over land.
They put over land. So my guys will be out there, and I'll be out there. We'll have a good time. Have a lot of fun.
Good. Good job. Good job. Okay. The next item of business is service awards, and we have one, is that right?
That's correct. And she's on page 14.
Okay. That was Yolanda Figueroa. Five years. What department is she in? Do you know?
Constable one.
Constable one. Okay. So that brings us to the citizens' comments at large. And if anybody wants to speak, you must fill out a public participation form, which Sheriff Deeds has in the back. And we have two people that have filled it out. The first speaker is Christine Leftwich.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I wanted to speak to allegations and rumors that are being circulated in the public, particularly in precinct 211, regarding an open records request on the topic of the Bitcoin mine. The allegation being that my office and the Commissioners failed to respond to the request, which was made by an individual on behalf of the concerned citizens of Navarro County and the Texas Coalition Against Crypto Mining. I only became aware of the request when it was received as part of an Attorney General complaint. At no point in time was the request received by me or any other official in the county. In fact, I had our IT department perform a system-wide check on two separate occasions, most recently on September 19th, and they confirmed that no open records request originating from the concerned citizens of navarro@gmail.com domain was ever received. I am well acquainted with the statutory requirements of open records requests, both in receiving and responding. My office nor any Commissioner has been derelict in responding to the request. A formal response to the complaint will be filed with the Attorney General this week. I am an advocate of government transparency and open access to public information. Now having received the request only by way of the Attorney General complaint, should there be any responsive documents, they will be provided. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brad Yarborough.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. I appreciate the time here. The other day, Dave, you told a story in court about a man in 1938 who misled the public or didn't tell them that it was a hoax, or he was joking around about aliens taking over. And you kind of moved that over to, you know, media is a powerful thing, and people can mislead the public, and that's a bad thing. I thought how fitting that you would say this, because you're the worst offender of misleading and lying to Hood County residents. Case in point, a week ago Monday, you told anybody who would listen, and it's on recording, so you can see it, that the school board raised the taxes this year. And that was a complete lie, and you know this is a lie. Last year's tax rate for the school was .9342. This year, it's .9319. It's clearly lower, but yet you keep through social media and this court telling people that they are raising taxes, and that's not true whatsoever. So I want to know why the constant lies? Why do you keep... We call you out over and over and over on the just lying. So I would like to know why. I called you out in this meeting because I knew what the tax rate was. You know what the tax rate was. And then after the meeting, in a very threatening way, you walked by me and said, "Anytime, anytime." What did you mean by that? Are you wanting to meet me outside and take care of business? Are you... I don't understand what this means. Why would a Commissioner threaten a member of the public, especially someone in your own precinct? When I ran for Republican Chair, the most common question I got asked was, "Do you support Dave Eagle?" And my answer was always no. And every person I told no, they said I had their vote. You lose in touch with the voters, they know you're lying, and they're tired of it. Thank you.
Good. That's all of the comments at large.
I've got a factual response to that. That comment was just made by one of the alleged precinct chairs that sued the Republican Party. So you take that for what you want.
Okay. This brings us to item number one. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize a county judge to sign the notice of general election. So the election administrator, Stephanie Cooper, is not here, but I think that the election ballot is in accordance with the law. Mr. Mills, have you seen it? Do you agree?
I have not.
You have not?
Drew... Who's... Yeah, there you go.
Do you want to just look at it real quickly? It's something...
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's a... You've done worse. Just shoot from the hip. That's the biggest...
Well, this is... Stephanie is... Her voice is real, real froggy. She's kind of under the weather there. And this is a very ministerial thing. This is just the...
Yeah. This is what we've done every...
The notice to have the election in November, which I think we're all on board with.
Where they're going to be had. It's what we've done every year.
I mean, she generally does a good job and knows what she's doing, so... I mean, it looks like it's got all the dates and times and whatnot that are consistent with what we've always done, so...
Yeah.
This is just part of COVID.
That's what I said. But I'd just like for a lawyer to touch it. You know, that's what lawyers do, right, Mr. Reed? You know, if you've got a client there, they just said, "I want my lawyer to touch it." Mr. Mills, was the Spanish correct? Mr. Mills? Sorry. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize a county judge to sign the notice of general election.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to authorize a county judge to sign the notice of general election, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously for zero. Okay. Item number two. Approved facilities maintenance to remove the wall between the two back rooms in the Department of Public Safety Office in Annex III. Yes, sir. Mr. Leland, who's doing a fabulous job here.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. They have an office back there in the DPS area. They want to remove the wall so the ladies sitting in the back can see into their lobby. This would be pretty low cost. The wall is not original to the building. It's not structural in any way. It's just a couple two-by-fours and some sheet rock, so...
Okay. Do you have money in your budget to do all of it?
Yeah, it should be pretty low cost. I'm guessing, and I talked with Commissioner Samuelson the other day, and I'm guessing we can do it under $100, easy.
Okay.
And that would come out of the contingency or out of your...
It'll come out of maintenance if we do have to spend anything, but I'm pretty sure I got all the material on hand to make it work.
Good. Good. Okay, good deal. Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow maintenance to remove the wall between the two back rooms in the Department of Public Safety Office in Annex III.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to allow or approve facilities maintenance to remove the wall between the two back rooms in the Department of Public Safety in Annex III, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number three. Thank you. Item number three. Consider and take appropriate action to award RFP 2024-06 Pest Control Services. Mr. Gary Tillman.
Good. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. The request for bids for pest control services opened August 12th and closed September 11th at 8:00 a.m. There were four qualified responses, and the bids varied widely, with Wise ChemSafe Pest Control being the lowest bidder and the best value. So the facility maintenance and purchasing departments recommend awarding the contract to Wise ChemSafe Pest Control.
Okay. Good deal.
Okay. This is just a little weird procedural question. Should we approve the budget before we enter into these contracts? I mean, I know we've got a few here, and it seemed like it may be a little bit out of order. I know we've got the fire truck maintenance and then the inter-local agreements with the fire departments and stuff. Would it make sense to go ahead and move, change the order on that?
It does. I mean, we're committing funds for next year without...
Well, I mean, if we... You know, if something were to happen in the budget, and we don't approve the funds for the fire departments, then that makes those inter-locals...
Well, these particular contracts are contingent upon funds being available, which is in our standard terms and conditions, so...
Okay, so it's not...
I don't know about the others, about the inter-locals.
It's not really a concern to...
No, not with these, because it's... That's taken care of within the contracts.
Okay.
So if for some reason either the funds weren't there, or that part of the budget wasn't approved, then we just wouldn't have the agreements?
Correct. Correct. There's a clause in our general terms and conditions that...
Okay. All right. With that, I'll make a motion to approve or award RFP 2024-06 Pest Control Services to Wise ChemSafe Pest Control.
The motion made by Commissioner Andrews to award RFP 2024-06 Pest Control to Wise. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number four. Consider and take appropriate action to award RFP 2024-05 Fire Truck Maintenance.
Good morning. The request for proposals for fire truck maintenance opened July 29th and closed August 29th at 10:00 a.m. There were three qualified responses. Sidens Martin was determined to be the best value and the lowest price, and was actually much lower than expected, which was great for the county. Great news. The fire marshal and purchasing departments recommend awarding the contract to Sidens Martin's Emergency Group.
Good review.
Sidens Martin Emergency Group.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, it's good to see that that came in significantly less than we were anticipating. So with that, I'll make a motion to award RFP 2024-08 Fire Truck Maintenance to Sidens Martin Emergency Group.
Second.
The motion made by Commissioner Andrews to award RFP 2024-05 Fire Truck Maintenance. Seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Okay. Item number five. Discuss concerns regarding all aspects of the Sheriff's Office budget. No action will be taken. Ms. Andrews.
Yeah, I put this on here. Last court, we were accused of defunding the police, and that had picked up some steam on social media and stuff. And I felt like we needed to kind of get some... Kind of get some air this out a little bit and go over a few points here. I was pretty riled up at that point. In the four years that I've been here, with this being the fourth budget that I've gone through, the sheriff's budget has increased 156%. I feel like we've gone out and made huge strides. Are we all the way there? I'm not saying that we are. But I feel like we've made big strides in getting to the right place. And I felt, you know, getting beat up on social media and getting emails and everything, accusing us of defunding the police, that is not what defunding means. Defunding is actually taking something away, not growing it by 156%. So I wanted to make that situation clear. I think that as far as our salaries go, looking at the surrounding counties, we're only trailing... On starting salary, we're only trailing Tarrant and Parker County. We're ahead of Johnson, Somerville, E-Rath, Palopinto. And I feel like we're doing a pretty good job of taking care of the Sheriff's Department. And I felt like this needed to get out in Commissioners Court. We needed to talk about it and get this out to the public and clear the air on some of this stuff, that there's not any defunding going on here. So I just wanted to touch on that.
Well, the only thing I like to say about this is that the sheriff did request two vehicles and four officers, additional officers, two investigators and two patrol people. And we didn't give him that. And it's not defunding, but it's not keeping up with the times either. And I keep saying this, is that we're in too close proximity to Dallas and Fort Worth with the gangs. And if the gangs come up here to Granbury, we're in such close proximity, I think that the citizens here wouldn't mind a little property increase for the additional protection that it's going to afford all of us. That's all I'm saying. And I'm saying, I don't like trying to guess a man that the citizens here in Hood County have elected, which will begin his 20th year in January, second-guessing him on what he needs, what his needs are. That's my only concern about that. So that kind of clears the air as far as I'm concerned. Anyway, you want to add anything, Sheriff?
Well, like you said, we asked for stuff, you took it away. So whether that's defunding or not, but the court's been great to us over the years, no doubt. I just want to keep up with what's going on around us too. So, and within, like the judge said, the county's growing, the city's growing, everybody else is moving forward, and I don't want to lag too far behind. I want to be able to keep up with everything. We got no doubt with the ARPA funds we've got, the last year since it came in late, the Senate Bill 22 money. I've got a lot of equipment that never had in the past, so that part is great. Hopefully, we'll get that renewed for those two employees, for the deputies, and then the application has been turned in, so we're just waiting to hear back from that, so we can keep moving forward. But I don't want to lag behind or go in reverse in any way. So I appreciate everything that the court has done. I think a lot of the budget increases is unfortunately the inmates, the out-of-county inmates. That keeps going up and up, and, you know, over the weekend, we had 252 in the system, 66 females, and today we got 67 females. So, and the jail was only built to hold, you know, 20, so we got to put them somewhere so they're out of the county. And that's a lot of the costs that have increased a little bit. I'm going to come up and ask for more money to feed them. Got to finish out the year, can't starve them, so I got to pay for groceries. So I do thank you, the court, for everything that's been done over the years, and let's keep moving forward, not moving backwards. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think I did say this at one of the special call meetings, but I'll go ahead and add this to the comments for this meeting. I just looked at the, just the staff-related budget lines, so not including equipment, ammunition, things like that. And since the 2021-22 budget compared to this budget, the staff-related budget lines have increased 54%. And that's for sheriff admin, and dispatch was 61%, and jail, 54%. There's, in addition to that, between Capitol and ARPA, a million dollars a year, $3 million. Just because we want, as I said at the last meeting, we want the safety equipment, the ballistic glass, the... glass, the ammunition, the different firearms that were required, because we want all of our law enforcement to be safe and to go home to their families every day. So, I just wanted to, I know there were some people that either didn't get to watch the video or weren't there, so I just wanted to, as Commissioner Andrews has said, that there's, this is the opposite of defunding. We want our Sheriff's Department to have the equipment and safety equipment that they need to be safe.
I got, I got something I want to put in here at this point, too. I'm going to put this on the record, that if you'll go to the September 17th Commissioners' Court video, and you go to about the 24-minute mark, you will see that I presented a PowerPoint presentation that lays out all the facts and data of what the Commissioners' Court has done in the last few years to help the Sheriff's Department. And so, for us to get accused of defunding the police is pretty ridiculous, actually. But I urge you to go take a look at that. And I want everyone to be mindful that we have a ballot measure. The sheriff brought up the out-of-county jail inmate situation, where we have more people in jail, so we're having to send, we can only keep so many in the jail, and we have to send them out. We got to do something with them. And we have a bond measure that will be on the ballot in November. It's a 50, the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed $50 million for expansion and renovation of the jail. And we're putting that to the voters, for you to decide, do you want to take on a debt of $50 million to expand the jail, renovate the old jail? So, part of the, our budget cycle this time is being mindful that that's coming up. We have a presidential cycle, one of, I know we say this every four years, but one of the most important presidential elections that may be in our entire history is going to be on November the 5th. And we don't know what's going to happen with that. But it could be, that's going to have relevance to what happens with our budgets and our income and everything else, and our revenue. So, I appreciate everything the Sheriff's Department has done, and we support our law enforcement. But the sheriff was, just like the judge said, the sheriff was elected to be the sheriff over the law enforcement. We were elected to watch the budget and to make sure that we're taking care of the taxpayers who are paying for this. That's all I got.
Okay. With that, thank you, Sheriff. All right, item number six, consider and take appropriate action to approve and sign the 9/2024-2025 Volunteer Fire Department Interlocal Agreements that take effect October the 1st, 2024. Okay. Yes, sir. Jeff Young.
Judge, Christmas. Mine is one of those items that is actually budget-dependent, so if you wanted to move this down below budget stuff, I would not have any problem with that.
Well, this is where we always start it. Let's just go here.
Okay.
If you want to get the money, we don't pass it, you don't...
Make the motion contingent on the, passing the budget, I guess.
Well, and that said, I'm actually going to ask you to approve and sign eight of them today. There's one of the departments that's got a little bit of internal turmoil going on, and they have a meeting going on this evening that, that may change things, and I'm not sure how that's going to play out yet.
You have eight that we're going to sign?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to take, approve and sign the eight 2024-2025 Volunteer Fire Department Interlocal Agreements that take effect October 1st, 2024.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve and sign the eight 2024-25 Volunteer Fire Department Interlocal Agreements that take effect October the 1st, 2024. Second by...
Second contingent on the passing of the budget.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. I'll leave them up here, and we'll sign them. Thank you.
I'm also Jeff Young. All right, number seven, discuss and take appropriate action to pass a resolution adopting the City of Crescent Resolution Number 2024-R004 to name the U.S. Highway 377 Crescent Relief Route currently under construction, the Bob Cornet Parkway, recognizing Mayor Cornet's service to the City of Crescent and providing an effective date. Okay, Dave Eagle. Commissioner Eagle? Yes, sir. So, the City of Crescent has, we want to be, do what, do as much as we can to help our neighbors out. And the City of Crescent has unanimously voted to name this Crescent Bypass after a former mayor. And I can read this resolution. However, since we have the mayor of Crescent here, I would request that he come up and read our resolution, if he's okay with that.
Do you have your glasses?
Chief Ron Becker, who's also the fire chief, the mayor, and do you also pick up trash on the weekends or something?
Yeah, we pick up trash over there, too.
And he cooks hamburgers, so...
This is a resolution of the Hood County Commissioners' Court resolving to name the U.S. Highway 377 Crescent Relief Route currently under construction, the Bob Cornet Parkway, providing an effective date. Whereas, in November 2019, Texas Department of Transportation TechStop began construction on a three-mile relief route west of the City of Crescent, Texas, the city known as U.S. Highway 377 Crescent Relief Route, commonly called the Crescent Bypass, to alleviate traffic congestion through the city on U.S. 377, consisting of a four-lane divided highway on U.S. 377, partially located within Hood County, beginning one mile south of the intersection of U.S. 377 State Highway 171 and ending one mile north of the same intersection, with the currently projected completion date of construction scheduled for late 2025. I hope they beat that. That's not in the resolution.
We all hope that, though.
Yeah, I think so by now. Whereas indicated in the resolution here, attached here to is Exhibit A, the City Council of Crescent, the City Council of the city has formally asked Hood County to designate the bypass highway completed as a result of the Crescent Bypass Project, the Bob Cornet Parkway, in recognition of the service of former mayor William Bob Cornet, who served as a member of the City Council upon his election as one of the first council members to serve following the city's incorporation as a municipality in 2000, specifically as mayor of the city from 2003 to 2020. Whereas, the Hood County Commissioners' Court now desires to designate the bypass highway completed as a result of the Crescent Bypass Project as the Bob Cornet Parkway, be it resolved by Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas, that the highway completed as a result of the Crescent Bypass Project be named the Bob Cornet Parkway. And I think Commissioner Eagle, it's in his precinct, and so contacted Commissioner Eagle a few, a little bit back, and got his support for doing this. Senator Burdwell tells us that upon passing of a resolution by the City Council, Johnson County, since one little part of this is in Johnson County and Hood County Commissioners' Court, that the senator will carry that in the upcoming legislative session to get it, get it approved and formalized. Yesterday, I was at Johnson County Commissioners' Court, and they have approved, they very graciously approved the resolution over there. And the only reason they're ahead of you is they meet on Monday, and you guys meet on Tuesday. One little thing that came up over there that I want to make sure you're aware of is in the city resolution, Senator Burdwell points out that occasionally, these things get a little confused, because who's going to pay for the signs? And we made sure in the resolution that the city passed, that it states that the city will pay for the signage, so that, we hope we took that issue off the table. And it's clear that that's not a Hood County or a Johnson County obligation. That's an obligation of us at the, at the city. So, I appreciate Commissioner Eagle concurring with what we thought was probably the best thing to do for this thing over in Crescent and for carrying this. And I think many of you knew Bob. His family continues to be involved in various aspects of public service, both with Crescent and wider than that. And we think it's, this is the right thing to be doing for, for this halfway open bypass now.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, after, after your discussion and your comments, I'm just going to make a motion to adopt the resolution as read by the mayor of Crescent.
Second.
I'm seconding it.
Okay.
I know, I knew Mayor Bob very well. We sat on a bunch of leadership deals together. He is something else. I know his wife. He's got a bunch of children and grandchildren that still do everything for the fire department. Of course, everybody in Crescent is somehow doing something for the volunteer fire department out there, but it's a great deal. You remember at the TechStop meeting, and the TechStop official said that the north, they call it north, I call it east, was going to be open Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving.
And I stood up, and I said, "Which Thanksgiving?"
Yes.
And everybody started laughing. Is it still this Thanksgiving?
They still say that they, on the Johnson County side, if you've driven to Fort Worth in the last week or so, their sign says that they're fixing to move the northbound traffic on the new part of it, and then the connection needs to be made. I noticed the sign said that they were going to move that traffic over on the 24th, and now it says the 25th.
Uh-oh.
So, they feel a one-day slide, all things considered, is better than most of the slides we've had on it. The southbound part or the westbound part has really functioned well. I'll tell you, you know, it started working and opened up in July. We've, I believe, run three calls out on that roadway, and none of them were the type of calls that the roadway had anything to do with. They were just, like, it just happened that's where someone had, needed some help. So, I'm hopeful that the eastbound, northbound side, when it gets going, will be as well-received and smooth as it seems like the other ones going.
All right. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Unanimous decision, okay, from Hood County. All right. Thank you, Mayor, Fire Chief. All right. All right, item number eight, receive update on the solution to return funds to Hood County from Tyler Technology for, one, discontinuing the implementation of ExecuTime, two, overpayments, three, other credits. Take action if necessary to receive funds into a specific account recommended by the county auditor or to process invoices against the credit balances. Okay.
Thank you, Judge. This is an ongoing issue. I think several of you are aware of this. This had to do with our implementation of a payroll system and timekeeping system in the treasurer's office that we, the treasurer's office worked diligently to try to implement for two years, but we discontinued it five months ago-ish. Yes. So, so we've been working with Tyler Technologies to receive a refund on equipment and software and other things that were purchased. And it's getting, we're getting really close. We had another, I was hoping yesterday, when we had a follow-up call, that that would be the last one, but they had to kick it up to their vice president and president because of the amount that is being asked to be returned. So, we have another follow-up tomorrow. So, hopefully by October the 8th, we'll have a resolution on, on the bulk of the funds. Now, there were some other credits, about $35,000, that we agreed to start chipping away at, for lack of a better word, as we get invoices from Tyler. We'll just apply it to that credit. So, we have agreed to do that at this point. And then, the bulk of the refund, we'll, hopefully, we'll hear about that on October the 8th. So, thank you.
Okay. Item number nine, discuss and take appropriate action to transfer funds to cover grocery costs through the remainder of the fiscal year in the amount of $30,000. Sheriff Dees.
Judge Commissioners, looks like we're going to need about $30,000 more to finish out the year for the groceries. So, we always cut it close towards the end, and we have so many extras on the weekends, I guess, maybe that makes a difference, making some extra meals and all that. But it is what it is. So, I'd like to ask that you transfer some more money in for, for the groceries.
Is that just a line item?
Yes.
Is that the money from Ms. Auditor?
Yeah, I didn't bring my sheet up, but it's a line item.
Contingency.
In the budget? Okay. All right. Okay. Well, everybody, if you've been to the grocery store in the last year, you know what's happened to grocery prices here. I don't think that shocks anybody here, that. Plus, you said, the increase in the jail system, I'm thinking. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to transfer funds from contingency into the sheriff's grocery budget to cover grocery costs through the remainder of the fiscal year in the amount of $30,000.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to transfer funds to cover the grocery costs through the remainder of the fiscal year in the amount of $30,000. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Item number 10, discuss and take appropriate action to confirm the SB 22 grant fund use plan submitted by the District Attorney's Office in accordance with the grant criteria and will be administered through a separate funds account with all appropriate expense lines, including salary, benefits, and other necessary expense items as determined by the county auditor. Mr. Ryan Sinclair?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Judge Commissioners, good morning. Mr. Mills came up with me, because I think item 11 is the same thing, except for his department. This is having to do with SB 22 monies awarded by the state to my office and to Mr. Mills's office. And we're just, I think collectively, requesting approval of our plans as submitted.
Okay.
I just had a question. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it yet, about the two FTEs, if you had office space, desks, computers, all of those things for those two new individuals.
Yes, I have, I have looked at that, Commissioner, and I do have office space, desk space. I have reached out to IT to inquire whether they have a computer. I only have one remaining position to be filled for that, those clerk positions. And I've reached out to IT to inquire whether they have computers and phones for that position.
Okay. So, that would probably use the, at least some of the 2,770 that's remaining for that?
No, there are two things with that. One, I overestimated those...
Oh, okay.
Retirement and healthcare and FICA, Medicare expenses, just to be safe. I believe that that discrepancy will be a lot higher, but I just wanted to play it safe, so I overestimated to be conservative. Also, I am not allowed, and Mr. Mills is not allowed, to use SB 22 funds for equipment. We can only use it on salaries.
Okay.
The sheriff's office is allowed by law to use SB 22 funds on equipment, but by law, neither Mr. Mills nor myself are allowed to use them on equipment, just salaries.
Okay. I was under the impression that anything related to the new staff would come out of SB 22. I thought that's the way it was last year, but, okay.
The way the law is written, we can't use it on equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
And the total request is 275,000, correct?
That's the total bucket of money awarded to my office and also to Mr. Mills's office in a separate amount, separate bucket. I'm not, I don't think I'm going to use all that, but that's the total bucket that we are awarded through the grant.
So, if you don't use it, you have to send it back?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
But just to be sure that we understand the impact on the budget for things that aren't covered under this, the only thing that you're thinking... aren't covered under this, the only thing that you're thinking, let, if the over-budget of the retirement wasn't enough, would be the computers and phones, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying even if my over-budget
Okay, yes, I
Is not correct, I can't use SB
I, I correct myself, so we should plan as a court for equipment for these two?
Yes.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's minor equipment, it's a
Yes, I just
Computer, telephone and things like that.
Right, I just wanna be sure that we're all aware of what, what is going on.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, a move that we confirm the SB 22 grant fund use plan submitted by, would it be okay to do the district attorney and county's, county attorney's office, or Matt, did you wanna speak on that?
You don't have questions for me, I mean, I'm here.
Yeah, we should, let's
All right, well, district attorney's office, in accordance with the grant criteria, will be administered through separate funds accounts with all appropriate expense lines, including salary benefits and other necessary expense lines as determined by the county auditor.
I'll second that. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to confirm the SB 22 grant fund use plan submitted by the district attorney's office in accordance with the grant criteria that will be administered to the separate fund accounts and all expense items, including salary benefits and other expense items as determined by the county auditor, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, the next item, discuss and take appropriate action to confirm the SB 22 grant fund use plan submitted by the county attorney's office in accordance with the grant criteria and will be administered to separate fund accounts with all appropriate expense items, including salary benefits and other necessary expense items determined by the county auditor. Mr. Matt Mills, yes, sir?
Well, you have my request, I didn't have all the ancillary things on the salary until maybe yesterday, but I mean, it's kinda minor as far as the FICA, retirement, all that, I wasn't sure what numbers to put in, but I'm not asking to spend very much of this money, we're asking for 31,283 total. If you have any questions. I learned my lesson from last year to, on those raises for the, the two assistants, to just not ask for it for Commissioners Court, but then give them raises from the SB money, so that's one of the things that we did here. In hindsight, I should've done that last year, but I wasn't sure how this would work or if it would be granted and all that kinda thing, so we just got it in the regular budget last year, but this time I assumed it would come, so we asked for, you know, 3%, 4% raises, modest raises there.
So, what was available to you?
275.
Okay.
So, yeah, 275 was awarded, or we, we assume it's gonna be, it's, it's in the works, and I'm only asking to spend 31,283 because I pay state taxes too and, I mean, well, the other thing is, you know, if I go and say, "Hey, there's money here, let's go spend it," and then at some point they quit the funding, then now I'm coming to Commissioners Court saying, "Hey, can y'all make this up?" And I don't wanna do that either.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to keep it at a minimum.
All right, with that, I'll make the motion to approve, confirm the SB 22 grant fund use plan submitted by the county attorney's office in accordance with the grant criteria and will be administered through this, a separate fund account with all the appropriate expense lines, including salary benefits and other salary, other necessary expense lines as determined by the county auditor.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to confirm the SB 22 grant use plan submitted by the county attorney's office in accordance with the grant criteria and will be administered through separate funds accounts with all appropriate expense item, including salary benefits and other necessary expense lines as determined by the county auditor, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item number 12, review and approve for signature the agreement to replace Bridge Pay as a payment system at Annex Two with Certified Payments. This is being done at no cost to the county. Recognize this, Christine Lefwitch, County Attorney.
Good morning. So, shortly after taking
Clerk. I finally got it.
Shortly after taking office, I had been contacted by Tyler Technologies who informed me that, that they were gonna sever their partnership with Bridge Pay, which is what we use at the Annex to process credit card payments. And so, I reached out to the Parker County Clerk to find out who they had used, because I know they also use the Tyler Eagle recorder for their documents and things, and she recommended Certified Payments. Tyler wanted us to go with their payment system, I really preferred to, to try somebody else and, and so I did reach out to Certified Payments. As mentioned, this isn't gonna cost anything, I understand they already have a contract with the county, they do the motor vehicle registration, credit cards, and so I'm gonna be provided with the devices, I've looked at their interface, it's very user-friendly, they're gonna be charging a 2.35% on credit cards, which is a minimum of $2, that's presently what we do, that is passed on to the customer, so I've just asked that you all allow me to sign this agreement so we could get the new credit card system.
Good deal, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the signature, to sign the agreement to replace Bridge Pay as the payment system at Annex Two with Certified Payments, and this is at no cost to Hood County.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the agreement to replace Bridge Pay as the payment system at Annex Two with Certified Payments at no cost to the county, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? Not, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 13, review and approve for signature the amendment with Tyler Technologies to replace the Hood Minutes program with Meeting Manager. This is being done at no cost to the county. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, the Hood Minutes program is a program that we have over at the Annex, and so everything that goes through Commissioners Court, documents, minutes, agreements, everything is scanned into that system and becomes searchable so that anyone, if we're looking for something from way back or recently, we can go in and pull those documents, so it's an important software to have for record-keeping purposes. Tyler indicated to me that they were no longer going to support that a couple of months ago, and they were rolling out this new software called Meeting Manager. I did have a Zoom call with one of their representatives and watched a demonstration of the software, it's, it's very user, user-friendly, I actually feel like it's, it's much better than what we have. I sent it to Drew and Owen and asked them to look at it and, and they both said that it looked, it looked fine. I mean, essentially, we need this program and Tyler is offering, again, to us at no cost to go ahead and, and go over to this new system that they have. The contract indicates that if we, if we don't do this by December, it's, it would cost 12,000, but right now, if we get it done by that time, they will do the new software, everything that's already archived in the current Hood Minutes program will transfer over to the new program, they'll do training, you know, for me, for my staff and everything like that, so I think we, we need to do it.
Good.
So.
Good, thank you very much with that. Do I hear a motion?
I guess just so it's understood why they're doing this at no cost, it's because they're discontinuing a product that, so this really saves them money because they're not having to support both products.
True, and, and from what I understand, we're one of the last counties that are kind of using this Minutes program, a lot of counties have already adopted their, their new software that they've been rolling out on this.
All right, with that, I'll make the motion to approve the signature on the amendment to Tyler Technologies to replace Hood Minutes program with Meeting Minutes, this is being done at no cost to the county.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve for signature the amendment with Tyler Technologies to replace the Hood Minutes program with Meeting Manager at no cost to the county, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Lefwitch. Okay, item number 14, consider and take appropriate action to approve Hood County constable and sheriff fees and commissions for 2025 under Local Government Code 118.131. Sheriff Dees.
Yeah, I was just gonna be here for any questions, but we did raise the fees for pet surrender, altered pet surrender, from 30 to 60, impound fees increased from 20 to 30, quarantine fees set up for flat rate of 250 bucks, and euthanasia fee, including disposal, been increased from 40 to 60 dollars, so, other than that, just whatever questions you might have.
That's in line with other counties being charged around, isn't it, I'm sure?
Yeah, Kelly spent some time checking with other counties and figuring, you know, how much time it takes for us and cost of euthanasia and, and disposal, all that, so she didn't just pull it out of the top of her head, she worked on it.
Good. Do I hear a motion? Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the Hood County Constable and Sheriff fees and commissions for 2025 under Local Government Code 118.131, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, item 15, Sheriff, this is still you, discuss and take appropriate action to purchase one Patrol 2025 Tahoe, $93,000 and one Dispatch console at $30,000, not to exceed a total of $123,000 from excess proceeds from tax sale account 010-3340-3740. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Judge. So, my intent on this was to get these in process, but as I was talking with the auditors yesterday, there is, if the funds aren't, if the item isn't received by the end of the, the month, it's going to go into next year's budget anyway, so I talked to Sheriff and Lieutenant Lyson and Mr. McGuire, Sean McGuire, earlier, and these will, these aren't going away, they're just going to go into the plan for capital, which is where they were to begin with, I was just trying to pull them forward and get them going, but it's going to be the same effect, it'll still be funds out of the next year's budget, assuming that the capital gets approved the way you had submitted it, so, so with that, I'll, go ahead, do you have?
I'm just gonna say, I totally understand, because the way it is ordering vehicles, who knows when we might get them, and we would have to have some lead time on building those consoles, so I totally understand.
Yeah, I was hoping to just pull them forward and, but it's, they won't be here until after September 30th, so the effect will be the same, the money will come out of next year's budget, so with that, I'm going to remove this agenda item.
To do what?
To, I mean, I don't table it, pull it, whatever word you wanna say.
I guess we're gonna pull out of 15 now.
And, and that's fine, because there's no way we'd have it before the end of the month, so I totally understand.
All right. This brings us to item number 16, thank you, Sheriff. Consider the proposed increase in tax revenue of the proposed budget. A, $2,837,115 or 11.17% increase, which is a tax rate of .309524, where the average homeowner would pay $186 more than last year. B, $1,395,590 or 5.7% increase, which is a tax rate of .282622, which is what it is this past year, correct, Ms. Auditor?
Yes.
Or the homeowner would pay $96 more if we left it the same.
And a correction.
Or C, no new revenue rate, no increased tax rate of .267258, or the average homeowner would pay $45 less. And take a record vote regarding the increase for Local Government Code Section 111.008C. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Auditor?
I have an update to the effect on the homeowner.
Okay.
So, what I did, what was put in here was, was wrong. So, I used 300,000 as the median income to determine the difference, when I looked at it again, and we should've, I should've used 330,687, 330,687 dollars as the median to go by, and so if you look at that and then you bring it out, it would be slightly different, but I just wanted to share that, so at .309, it would be 102.83 different to the homeowner.
How much, 100 and what?
102.
102 dollars?
Yes.
More?
More than last year, I mean, based on the average term value.
On the average?
Yes.
No?
Some people's went down, some people's stayed the same, and then that number, if we kept it at the rate from last year to this year, it would be 12.66
12.
Difference, and then if we did the new revenue, it would be 38.83 less than last year.
So, 38 dollars less. So, the difference is 102 dollars, 12 dollars
Yes.
And 38 dollars.
Yes.
Okay, and with that, we have one speaker that signed up to speak, Mr. Greg Harrell. I hope you took heed to what I said about buying these new trucks and hiring new officers, Mr. Harrell.
Judge? Commissioners? Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak and thank you for the work that all of you have put into this budget, and also, I want to acknowledge the county auditor and, and her staff in regards to this. You probably know what I'm here to speak about, and that is that I urged you last week during the special call meeting to adopt a no-new-revenue-rate approach to the budget. I'm here to underscore that position, although I do acknowledge that based on the changes that were just cited by the auditor, that the middle option is pretty modest as well, so I want to acknowledge that. However, having said that, I want to at least bring to your attention the three points that I made during last week's special call meeting. Number one is, I'm here to advocate on the behalf of a lot of people here in Hood County that don't have an opportunity to come to these types of meetings and to speak to you as a body as you consider this budget. There are a lot of people that are here in Hood County that have to work for a living and that's exactly what they're doing, and during these times, they are doubling down on the work that they have to do in order to make ends meet. We all acknowledge, just as you acknowledged here in item nine on the agenda, that the cost of groceries are going up. So, people are having to deal with those types of choices as they, as they move forward through their everyday lives. I talked to you last week about being in a situation as a church leader where we know that we are seeing people to come to us that are asking for help with utility bills, that are asking for help from our food pantries, and I take, I talked to other ministry leaders that are in that exact same boat, so times are tough, and so as you consider what to do to move forward as you approve this budget, I would just ask you to consider that and keep that in the forefront of your mind, there are a lot of people that are out there that are truly struggling, and I know that, and I know that that responsibility weighs heavy on each of you as well. Secondly, the county has a fund balance that, and several months ago, all of you passed a policy that would state exactly where that fund balance should be in order to, in order to really reflect that the county doesn't want to withhold funds from the taxpayer. I would urge you to consider that you move forward and as you adopt your budget, you keep in mind that we can spend, you're in a position to spend that fund balance down to a certain amount during this coming year, and I think that we should do that. And then finally, and this is certainly not kicking the can down the road, and I don't wanna hear anybody say that on social media, I'm not asking to kick the can down the road, however, we know know that as we restore President Trump into office, that he will adopt policies that will make America, our economy, go again. And so, I think that as we approach next year's fiscal year, we can be assured that the economy should be better. I think that it will begin to get better on November 6th, hoping that we have a decision on the election by November 6th. But he will begin to take actions immediately, even before he's in office. And I think that the American people will acknowledge that the hand will be back off the restriction of the national economy, that the foot will be on the accelerator of the national economy, and that next year, as we go into the next year, that the economy of Hood County will be much better suited to consider maybe an increase in tax, in the tax rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the only speaker that we have signed up for this. Can Commissioner Wister speak on this?
Well, I agree with you, Greg Harrell, that with the modest increase of 12 dollars, really, is anybody going to really know that? And that would put a million, really a million 400,000 dollars in the thing. That's kind of a small price to pay to have some extra money, not knowing really what's going to happen. I mean, we all hoping what's going to happen on November, but you don't really know. I, and this is the first time we've ever reduced the fund balance. And like our auditor said before, it's not a good policy to try to live out of the fund balance with fires maintaining operations and maintenance on the thing. I would really like to, to make a motion that we do the tax rate of .282622 for the tax rate. See if I can get a second. You want to second it, Greg Harrell?
No second? I guess that motion fails for lack of a second.
I think that, and I appreciate Mr. Harrell's comments, but we have an opportunity here to do something for the taxpayers. We've talked about HCAD. We've been, approved a resolution requiring HCAD to return the funds of their fund balance back to the taxing entities. Of course, that's by their taxing statute. They're not allowed to have a fund balance, but we requested that they return those funds to the taxing entities. But we also have talked about, people have talked about, not necessarily this body, but we as taxpayers in Texas have looked at the state, and especially during the 88th legislature, and said, they have a surplus of $34 billion. That's the taxpayers' money, and that should go back to the taxpayers. Well, we have a similar situation here where we just received our audit, our annual audit. We received it just in the nick of time. We received it Friday. And it states that we have a fund balance well above our fund balance policy. So, we have an opportunity here to give that money back to the taxpayers. We shouldn't be holding on to money that is the taxpayers' when there's, just for the purpose of holding on to it. We already have a fund balance policy to protect against any unforeseen circumstance for up to four months of fund balance. And I'm not advocating to use all of the excess, but we do need to get closer to where we should be on our fund balance policy. We have a certain amount of surplus and contingency balance that's required for our fund balance policy, and we shouldn't be holding on to that money. So, with that, I'll make a motion to adopt the no new revenue rate, which we have been, this is the budget that we've been working off of for the last several budget meetings. And so, I'll make a motion to adopt the no new revenue rate of 267258.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to adopt the no new revenue rate of .267258. Now, here, second?
I'll second that with this proviso. I would like to see us even go lower than that. But I can live with the no new revenue rate. This commissioner can. And to echo what Commissioner Samuelson said, we have, we passed a resolution not too long ago admonishing the Hood County appraisal district for overfunding themselves and then having money left over in a fund balance that, for a rainy day, so to speak. We did vote on a policy to have four months, about four months into a fund balance that's unallocated, which even making up the difference with the no new revenue rate with fund balance, we're still going to be well above that number. And I think the most, the prudent thing to do right now is to keep it down as low as we can. And before Commissioner Samuelson made that motion, I would have made a motion for even a lower rate. But in an effort to compromise, I seconded her motion. But I think, I think we need to give the taxpayers every break we can. We got a bond issue coming up. We got a hospital district issue coming up. Contrary to what a former speaker said, the school district has raised your out-of-pocket tax. And rate, tax rate is a smoke and mirrors when you're looking at appraisal district numbers. And especially with the compression that the schools are working with, it's an absolute shell game. They lowered the tax rate by about two tenths of a penny, and it looks like they lowered it, but you're going to pay 340 dollars more average. So, that's my long-winded second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to adopt the no new revenue rate of .267258, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have to do a record vote on that.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner. Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Andrews votes aye. Commissioner Samuelson?
Aye.
Both aye. Judge Massengill votes nay. Commissioner Eagle?
Aye.
Aye. So, the ayes have it three to one.
And that's not for adoption of the rate. That's to adopt the increased revenues by virtue of the rate, correct?
Consider the proposed increase in tax revenue of the proposed budgets, what the record is. Okay. That's it. All right. Item number 17. Consider the proposed budget that was the subject of a public hearing on Tuesday, August of 27, 2024, for Hood County fiscal year 2025, including any changes as agreed, and take a record vote regarding the budget. Local Government Code 111.008 and 111.009, and Text Code Chapter 26. Ms. Auditor, what do we?
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I think that there's something, and we had spoken a little bit this morning. One of the things that we, I think looming on the horizon is the potential for another district court coming in. And I think that we need to be in a position where if, if a piece of property comes up that we need to move on, if a building comes up that we can utilize when, when taking these things into consideration, that I think that we need to be able to, to address that without having to go to a public notice, a public hearing, a budget amendment in the middle of the year to go into all that. One of the things that I would like to see is, is for the capital projects to kind of pull that back from, from a contingency and put it more into an actual capital project situation with a fund balance. And I think it would be very appropriate for the building that we sold last year, the revenues from that to go into the capital projects line. That way, if there is a piece of property that comes up, and, and, and this money doesn't have to be spent. It's just in case there is a need there, in case there's something that we need to move on that, to, to create that fund there in the capital projects so that we can purchase a piece of property if need be. And I think that the contingency, a contingency in the general fund for more of the, like we've had here in the past few years, we've had, well, just today, we've had an increase in groceries in the jail. We had an increase in out-of-county inmate expense. We've had a, a few years ago, we had an increase in fuel prices. So, that would be, in, in the past, we've pulled that money out of capital, and that's not, not really the appropriate place for that. I think that the contingency fund would be more, more appropriate for that. And with that, I would think, I would like to see the capital, and again, rely on, on fund balance for that, to increase the capital projects fund there, at least the 1.4 that the, the property that we sold. And then a contingency, again, to have a contingency there, to have access to your fund balance through contingency, let's not spend it. Let's let that build. But if something does come up, if we do have to have some out-of-county money, our out-of-county inmate money, then have that contingency there. So, I'd like to see the contingency go up a little bit on that also. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Kind of sounded like Kamala Harris there for a second there. I see a lot of word salad here. I don't know exactly what you said here, Commissioner.
Well, just follow along.
You got a motion?
So, in other counties, they do budget their fund balance in case they need it. And so, I think that's what he's suggesting. I just would like to know what dollar amount you would like to see. So, what's in?
So, budget the fund balance?
Yes.
They do budget the fund balance in case they need to use it, rather than having to redo a whole budget. But it's a... But for example, in Fund 55, which is called Capital Projects, instead of having this one big bulk line that says transfer in from other funds, it would specifically say the things that we've been talking about. For sheriff vehicles, I'm rounding up. So, sheriff vehicles, 900,000. He's talking about land purchase, 1.4 million. Holding boxes for animal control, 70,000. It would have specific line items for those things. Road and bridge, bobcats, 78,000. So, those are, is that what you're talking about?
Well, and I don't know if it would need to be broken down that, that specifically, but I think that, you know, real estate would be, would be something that we would factor into that. I think that to have a fund with, with a dollar figure on that, again, this, what we're talking about here with some of the items that are already listed out, we could leave that in, in, in capital, because that's all capital purchases for those things. If we, if we wanted to look this next year and say, okay, let's move the, the patrol vehicles into the sheriff's budget, make a sheriff's capital line in there, then we could, we could do that. But again, I think that we're, I think that we've been using capital as a contingency, and it's a little, that's a little.
Right.
You know?
Yes, I, I agree with that, that capital is for capital improvements, capital equipment. Things that come up that need to be repaired or replaced are more maintenance, and those should come out of contingency.
Well, every, every once in a while, the judge and I agree, and I'm with him on this one. Okay, what do you want? I'm not clear.
Well, I, I would say, okay, on the capital projects, we've got the budgeted 3,580,000. I say put the 1.4 million into that account from the sale of the property last year. And then that, that to be there and available in, in capital projects. And then also in contingency, we have what, 500,000 in contingency? That's pretty thin. We had to move 800,000 for out-of-county inmates. And again, this is funding that I'd rather not spend, but should we put another million dollars into contingency there to make that 1.5 in case?
That's kind of high.
Okay.
Say 500,000 maybe, because she's already bumped it up from, or moved a lot of the things that were in, being spent out of capital into contingency is how she came to the 500,000. So, maybe a million.
You want to go a million?
Mm-hmm.
I, I would be okay with that.
What's the mo, I'm sorry, what's the motion?
Right now, it's a discussion. I'm just throwing ideas out here, and this is, this is what I'm thinking. If, you know, I was looking for, looking for feedback on that. If it needs to be a motion, then I, I make a motion that we increase capital projects by 1.4 million and increase contingency by 500,000.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to increase capital projects by 1.4 million and increase contingency by 500,000?
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion?
Just to be clear, and the 1.4 million is coming from the sale of the property, and the other is coming out of fund balance?
Fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And do we need to make a?
All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0.
So, one other item on the budget, we, there, there's a, one employee that, do we need, I don't think we can do this in exact...
That would be in the, that would be on the salary matrix.
Okay. I'll wait till the salary matrix then.
Well, we did.
Yeah, we did the salary.
We have a speaker regarding the budget. That's Judge Howe. Do you want to?
I vote in for Judge. I'm on 19.
You're on 19? Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Then I don't have...
Do we need to vote for 17 now?
Yes.
I mean, that was...
Yes.
We just voted on something peripheral to 17. Now, we need to vote on 17.
Okay.
What's the motion?
This, I'll make...
Approve the proposed budget?
Yeah, the proposed budget with the change that was just, so we have the proposed budget that Ms. Matlock gave us this morning. And with the change that was just, the motion that was just made for the change in contingency and capital, I'll make the motion to approve this budget dated 9/23/2024, 6:43, 21 PM, with those two changes.
I'll second that. Motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the budget that was handed this morning to us. Yes, ma'am?
We need a record vote.
Okay.
Please.
Okay. Well, let me go ahead and finish. The motion is to approve the budget that was handed to us this morning, 9/23/2024, with the motion that was just made and approved and seconded by Commissioner Eagle, that requires a record vote. So, Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Samuelson?
Aye.
Judge Massengill, aye. Commissioner Eagle?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, 4-0. Okay. This brings us to now number 18. We, we just got through doing that, right? A redundancy, I guess, on the thing. 18 is moot. So, 19, consider and take appropriate action to approve the 2025 salary matrix, setting salaries as of October the 1st, 2024. Do we need a record for upping this?
I have five people who are brought to my attention that we may need to look at.
I have five people who are brought to my attention that we may need to look at. And I think we did already approve the salary matrix, other than these five people I'd like to talk to you guys about.
Yeah, can we go to executive session and...
It's not listed on the agenda as executive session.
Well, but it's, I think it would fall under the specific salary.
But it's, well, we do have one speaker on this, the Honorable Judge Howell here, hambling towards the microphone.
Good morning, Judge. Morning Commissioners. Okay, I didn't know where to put this, but I have a longtime, part-time employee that is moving to full-time the first of the year. She's been a county employee for three years, indispensable part of my office, as she was in JP2. As she moves to full-time, I think it's inappropriate for her to have to come in at the entry level like she was someone off the street. I'm just asking y'all to put her in at the next step, which is step two, or grade two, or, forgive me for not being so familiar with the nomenclature of the new matrix system, but I just wanted to, I didn't know where else to put it in, in the budget, but she just needs to come in when she goes full-time as a stage two, or whatever, instead of, instead of step one. That's all I'm asking. Thank you all.
We have to modify, is she already on the salary matrix?
She is on a step one in the matrix. So if you wanted to change it to a step two, we get 200,000, $515.
Difference of 1,000, what?
515.
515? Okay. Well, in view of what Judge Howell has said on the thing, I think that, that step one was really talking about a new employee without any experience. She definitely has the experience.
She's been here three years.
Motion in that regard?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to...
My question would be, if we do that with another part-time employee, we do have possibly a JP2 position opening up, is that going to be the same standard for if a part-time employee becomes...
That's my concern. We're setting a precedent here that we haven't really vetted.
Because it would need to be considered during this budget process, if you plan, if that comes up.
Well, and I, you know, I've always said that if somebody comes with...
Experience.
Particular qualifications or whatever, that that would be...
It's kind of a case by case.
But what if the budget's not there?
I think that that would be a, it'd be a contingency thing, or whatever, if needed be, that...
You're saying if... How would somebody move, okay, so let's say a full-time person left in February, and the part-time person in that office has been here five years, but the person that left had only been here one year.
And was that a step one?
Was that a step one? Moving the part-time person into the position that's open would impact the budget by several thousand dollars, going from a five-year employee to taking the place of a one-year.
If, it could, if you started that employee at a step two instead of a step one, where the previous position was budgeted.
Well, that's what we do with the Sheriff's Department, too, if they come in with prior experience and stuff.
But there we, the court budgeted a bucket...
Yeah.
For additional funding.
And there's TCO standards, this is, this is, and do you, and they're full-time, so this is, how do you evaluate the part-time versus full-time years?
And I know, well... We had budgeted in a salary contingency. I don't know if we had just rolled that into a general contingency. It is just general, it's kind of catch-all over there.
I think it's okay if we talk about these five people, other than the JP1 clerk, that were brought to our attention, as long as we don't share their names specifically.
Okay.
If that's okay with y'all. There were a few that were brought to my attention that had received raises that were not updated on our matrix, and so then going into the next year, we need to look at this. There's five.
Okay.
So, I don't know, what did you guys decide on this clerk, the JP1 clerk?
Talking about it.
Okay, sorry. Okay, you want to move to the others and then come back to that, or? Okay, so this person in animal control had a increase, their current salary is 37,000, and then in 2025, the base would be 36,500 going down, but there's not an incentive to offset it, so it would only be a $700 increase. So you may want to look at that one.
37,000 was the salary at the beginning of the budget in 2024.
So they, they had a raise at some point, and our matrix was not updated, and so I just recently updated it, and so now it looks, it needs to be looked at.
Yeah, I pulled that matrix at some point earlier in the year, and it, it did not necessarily reflect the most current version, so that would need to go. Is that the only animal control step one? It is.
The step two would be 39 base.
Do we need to do that, or adjust the, the step one?
Adjust the step one. Animal control step one, which is, you're saying that step one is currently 30, can you pull up the matrix?
I was saying that she doesn't need to, she, it's unfair for her to come in as a step one in that position, since she's been working as a part-time for three years.
We're on, we're on animal control.
I didn't mean to have to step out, but I had to step out. Okay, is there a question here? What did I cause here?
No, we're going through all of, there's apparently five that need some kind of adjustment, so we're just going through them one by one. We haven't gotten to the, that one yet. So right now, we're on animal control.
Okay, I don't have anything to do with that.
So it's 36,500, 39, so what's probably, 36,500.
Can you go back to the other page?
Take them, I'm gonna take them. 10-minute recess right now, y'all should start working on that. At five minutes after 11, we are convening back into Commissioners' Court after a brief recess.
Okay, Judge, what we did is, we had a few that we needed to get placed correctly on the matrix, so we made, made a few little adjustments with that. And then we did have one small tweak that only affects one person, and that is to move animal control step one to 38,2. And, and that, that fixes that. There was an old salary in there, and the matrix was adjusted to that old salary, and it did not give, it brought her down. So with this adjustment, now she's up at a 3%, and everything's, everything else is just putting somebody on the matrix correctly.
So you, do we need to go through the five that you're...
So what's the motion?
Well, I guess, let's do this. I make a motion to change animal control officer step one to 38,2.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to change animal control step one to 38,2, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, and then the other thing, I'll make a motion to allow JP1 to hire, to hire in on the salary matrix at step two for their clerk with experience.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to allow JP1 to hire the new employee, part-time employee at step two rather than step one. Second by...
Second.
By Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 4-0. Anything else to adjust the salary matrix?
Well...
Anything else, misaudited?
Our clerk has a question.
What is the county clerk on this file? I thought we were going to talk about that.
Oh, wasn't, wasn't on the, wasn't on the matrix exactly right. Yeah.
Because we have an individual, she just got...
Right.
She was at work still, and so we just adjusted her on the office manager matrix. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so now with those adjustments, now you want to make a motion to approve the salary matrix?
We have one that is an individual that we need to go into executive session. Are we, I mean, we have that, the verbiage at the bottom, are you, Commissioner Eagles, our parliamentarian, do you have any objection into going, not, he's, not necessarily our parliamentarian, but he's, he's...
Oh, there was one...
My question is, okay, you're asking, I thought we did this vote last week on the salary matrix. So I guess I'm a little bit confused, are we, is this addendum? Are we reopening, did we go on salary?
Yes.
Did.
We did.
So I guess I'm a little confused.
Well, there were a couple of small tweaks that we needed to do, and then there was one, yes, yeah.
These changes, well, we've already voted on, so it's more of an addendum.
Yes.
Right. And then there's one other issue that we need to address.
Okay.
Particular, or to a particular person, particular salary.
So you're saying that you've got to go into executive session on this, since it's a particular person?
And we have an executive session about purchasing property and...
Right.
Well, let's hold off on both of those, and then we'll finish the rest of the...
Okay.
With that...
We have a right to go into executive session, even though it's not on there, because this is a personnel matter, and we've got the boilerplate language at the bottom of our agenda.
Yeah, that was my question a minute ago, so thank you.
Okay. All right, on the consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to pull anything or question anything under the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 4-0. All right. Road Ops, no things, Development, Mr. Clint Head, set a public hearing for replat of Lot 24R Canyon Creek, Unit 3.
Staff recommends setting the public hearing for November 12, Commissioners' Court.
November 12, 2024, okay, to hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to set the hearing for the replat of Lot 24R Canyon Creek, Unit 3, on November 12, 2024.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to set the public hearing for the replat of Lot 24R Canyon Creek, Unit 3, for November the 12th of 2024, seconded by...
Second.
Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 4-0. Now at 11:12, we are convening into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Stroud Creek Estates, Section 4, Lots 15R, 16R1, and 16R2. What sayest thou, Mr. Head?
Public hearing? We're going into public hearing?
You are.
Okay. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 1. The subdivision will be creating two 2.5-acre lots, and one 4.6-acre lot out of lots 15 and 16. These proposed lots will be served by private well and onsite sewage facilities. There is no infrastructure proposed to be constructed with this replat and will access existing Blue Lake court. Notification letters were mailed to all property owners in this recorded plat, making them aware of the public hearing and the replat. Staff has reviewed this replat, all comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat as presented.
You recommend approval?
Staff does.
Okay. We have one speaker on that with, and we're in a public hearing. You wish to say something, Mr. Reed?
I will take an opportunity to say one thing. First of all, I appreciate your time and your consideration of this replat, and I am here on behalf of the owner, Mr. George Olthorff, who is requesting the replat, and I think it is, in effect, a ministerial matter, and we do request your approval of the replat. I've had the privilege of, I'll just say one other thing, since I happen to be behind the microphone here, hopefully I won't get in too much trouble, but I have had the privilege of being here for the entire meeting this morning, and it just reminds me that, in many respects, the job that you guys do for our county is a thankless job, and it certainly can be, at times, a very challenging job, and so just as one relatively longtime member of the community, I've been here since 1984, but I'll just take the opportunity to, to thank each of you, Kevin, and Nanette, and Judge, and Dave, for your service. I just, I'm grateful that we live in a county where we have folks that are willing to sacrifice their time and their effort and their energy to serve our community, and I know you hear a lot from people that are dissatisfied or unhappy with something that's going on, and that's part of the job, but you probably don't have an occasion quite as often to hear somebody say, "Well done," so anyway, we certainly appreciate your service. Thank you.
Well, thank you for those kind comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at 11:16, we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the replat of Stroud Creek Estates, Section 4, Lots 15R, 16R1, and 16R2.
Second. Okay, a motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of Stroud Creek Estates, Section 4, Lots 15R, 16R1, and 16R2, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 4-0. Next, discuss and consider accepting a letter of credit for maintenance of street and right of way at Pirate Village in Precinct 3.
Development's asking the court to consider accepting the letter of credit for maintenance of the street and right of way at Pirate Village. The streets have been constructed, and if the court accepts the letter of credit, it will begin a two-year maintenance by the developer. The final plat was approved at August 8, 2023. The final plat was approved at August 8, 2023, Commissioners' Court.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept a letter of credit for maintenance of the street and right-ofway at Pirate Village in Precinct 3.
I'll second.
By Commissioner Andrews to accept the letter of credit for maintenance of the street and right-ofway at Pirate Village in Precinct 3, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Financial, County Auditor, Ms. Stephanie Matlock.
We have some invoices, $1,332,533.57. The auditor's office has reviewed all the invoices and recommends payment.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills at the amount of $1,332,533.57, as stated.
Second.
Paid by Commissioner Eagle to pay the invoices from September 4 through September 17, at an amount of $1,332,533.57, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously, four zero. Okay.
All right, so we also have, it's the end of the month, so we have all of our reports. We have reviewed all of these reports and recommend that the court accept these.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the financial reports as presented.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to accept the financial reports as stated, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Okay, with that included in them, we have acknowledged and accept the torrentary for review of Constable in Precinct 3 financial records. Did you approve that?
I do, yes, sir.
All right, was that...
Our offices reviewed everything and recommends that the court accepts.
Okay, good deal. All right, was that part of the rest of it?
It certainly can be, it's up to y'all.
Yeah.
Also, did we, also the bank statements? I mean, you could loop them all together if you wish.
Report, I make a motion to accept the, we already did the reports, right?
Yes.
The bank statements and the, acknowledge the review of Constable Precinct 3 financial records.
I'll second.
Paid by Commissioner Samuelson to accept the 2020 review of Constable Precinct 3 financial records, including the bank records, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries four zero.
And then we have the audit.
Five, discuss and accept the 2023 annual financial review from Kennamere Masters and Lunsford LLC. You review that?
I did review it, and hopefully you guys had time to review it as well, and we recommend accepting.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the financial review from Kennamere Masters and Lunsford LLC.
Second.
Kevin beat me.
A motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to accept the 2023 annual financial review from Kennamere Masters and Lunsford, after my permission, answered. Any further discussion? That, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Ms. Matlock. And with that, at this time, at 11:20, we are journeying into executive session to discuss. 17 minutes to 12, we are convening back into Commissioners' Court. No action was taken in executive session, and if you want to make...
Yeah, I'll make a, yes, I'll make a motion to reclassify the election administrator position to an exempt position at a salary of 79,000.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Samuelson to reclassify the election administrator's position as exempt status and a new salary of 79,000 per annum. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries four zero. Any other motion?
With the modifications that we've got there, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments and accept the salary matrix with those amendments.
Second.
It must have been made by Commissioner Andrews that with the three, I guess it was three amendments that we made to the salary matrix, to accept the salary matrix that we had previously approved, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries four zero. Any other business? And with that, at 11:45, Commissioners' Court is...